Good evening and welcome to the Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting. This is the city of Fayetteville, Tennessee, December the ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll call this meeting to order first our prayer tonight be spoken by Nathan Browning, and then to say our pledge. We have two beautiful young students at Ralph Askin School. It's Seeley and Wesley Stamps. So if you guys want to come forward, we're going to say the prayer first. Everyone stand.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father God, we come before you today with grateful hearts. Grateful hearts that are acknowledging your grace and your goodness and thank you for the blessings of this community and the future blessings you have in store. Lord, grant wisdom to everyone gathered here, our leaders, staff, and residents. Guide our thoughts and conversations so that the decisions made today bring peace, justice, and well-being in your glory to all who call this city great. Protect our neighborhoods and those who serve as our protectors. Uplift our families and give us a spirit of joy, thankfulness, and gratitude. May your grace be evident in our actions and your love reflected in our daily walk. Thank you for your son, Jesus, as it is that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Great job. Board, you have been presented with an agenda as before you. I will make one note on item seven A. This would be the oath of office from the police department, and with my understanding, we're going to reschedule this at this time due to a conflict of the calendar. Is that correct, Chief Jennings?
Yes.
Okay. So if you will make note of that. Is there, are there any corrections or additions? These minutes, the agenda will stand as presented with the one note on item seven A. Next, we'll move into the minutes. First, we have the public hearing minutes on the five twenty-one Market Street rezoning. This was November the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I hear a motion for these minutes? I have a motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those minutes will stand as presented. Also, item B. Because this was a public hearing, I do want a vote on this. So this was the public hearing on the four oh six Franklin Avenue, the rezoning on November the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion for this public hearing minutes?
So moved.
My motion and second. Debbie will call the vote.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Small?
Aye.
Okay, those minutes will stand as presented. Also, the minutes for the regular meeting minutes for November the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Were there any corrections to these minutes? Hearing none. These minutes will stand as presented also. There was no one that signed up for public comment today, so we'll move directly into our recognition by Chief Benny Jennings. Also, we're having technical difficulties with our microphones tonight, so if everybody would speak a little louder than normal. This is going on video, so we want to make sure that we get the voices.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I'd like to recognize Officer Detective J.T. Maston and Commander Andy Rodriguez. On November the sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, at Lincoln Medical Center, Officers, Commander Rodriguez and Detective Maston were at the Lincoln Regional ER investigating a, an incident when a, when a family arrived in extreme distress with a child who was not breathing. And without hesitation, these two officers immediately took action to assist, recognizing the critical nature of the situation. Officer Maston and Rodriguez promptly initiated CPR on the child and worked in coordination with the hospital staff in the resuscitation efforts. Their quick thinking, decisive action, and skillful application of emergency medical training were instrumental in saving this child's life. This incident exemplifies the high standards of our profession. Officers Maston and Rodriguez were at the hospital for an unrelated matter. It shows exceptional awareness and readiness, proficiency in lifesaving techniques, dedication to protecting and preserving life, and professional collaborations with the hospital staff that evening. And it demonstrates the core values of this, of our department, and I'd like to recognize these two officers.
Thank you.
I also have another officer I want to recognize. We actually have three more. Commander Jesse Casillas. On November the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, while leaving the police department, going home for the end of the day in Park City, Commander Casillas was traveling after completing his shift when he became aware of an emergency situation involving an unresponsive female in the parking lot of Pizza Inn in Park City. Learning that the Lincoln County Sheriff's Department's Deputy Miller was responding along to this critical incident, Commander Casillas immediately made the decision to assist despite being off duty. On arrival, Commander Casillas and Deputy Miller found the female unresponsive and immediately initiated CPR. Working together, they performed lifesaving measures and continued resuscitation efforts until emergency medical services arrived on the scene and assumed patient care. Commander Casillas' actions on this day exemplify the highest standards of law enforcement and unwavering commitment, and he is an asset to our department. Thank you. Then I have Officers Ryan Cole and Officer Jasmine Mack. Both of these officers are our new officers, and Officer Mack just graduated the academy on October thirty-first. And on the fifth of December, they responded to a call involving a gentleman from Areb, Alabama, Mr. Richards. He contacted our department to express his appreciation for the manner in which they handled this situation. Mr. Richards specifically noted that the following correspondence, their exceptional professionalism throughout the interaction, the respect they demonstrated toward him during the call, their calm judgment in handling what he described as an unjustified call, their ability to alleviate what could have been an unnecessary stressful situation. And I quote, "Mr. Richards stated that their conduct helped alleviate what could have been an unnecessary stressful interaction, and he felt, I felt, it was important to make you aware of the positive way your officers represented the city." He further noted that their approach reflects well on your, on your, our leadership, the department, and the community, and the city as a whole. He also went on to say that before this interaction, he was thinking about moving to the, to our city, and he's, he's now positive he would like to be a resident of our city because of the interaction he had with these officers. And them just demonstrating our professionalism and pride within the department, I wanted to thank them as well.
Thank you, Chief. Now we move on to reports. First up, we have CEO Mayor Beth Seals from the Huntsville Hospital Lincoln Hilton.
Good evening. Hope everything's been well tonight. Just a short report to finish out what I feel like has been another great year at the health system. You know, I always say I want to thank the many employees who represent me tonight as they are back doing all their jobs and doing them so well. I want to let you know our total employee count right now, we're somewhere around four hundred and fifty in the health system. So around two twenty, two twenty-five at the hospital, around forty at EMS, around thirty at the Patrick, ninety to ninety-two at Donaldson, forty at our clinics, and around eighteen to twenty representing home health and hospice. So I'm really proud of how we're doing with retention and employment at the health system, and I hope you are too. Just want to talk about some things that affect the community. First, on a very positive note, and for someone in the crowd who represented us very well, and that is with our foundation. We just had a very successful event back on Veterans Day, Dancing with the Stars, and I know some of you saw that. If you remember, the Lincoln County Health Foundation has been around for a very long time, and they exist to raise funds for the health system that they then put back into the health system to otherwise buy things that we may have not had capital funding for at the time, or that we may have put our capital funding back for, for, you know, another year or another time. So they did two fundraisers this year. Their first one back in the spring where they made around five thousand dollars. This fundraiser, they set to make around ten thousand after Dancing with the Stars, and they raised twelve thousand five hundred. And they did a great job. Mr. Joseph Faulkner participated in that, and he did a very nice job. Should have been the winner, right? But it was a great event. We've all been teasing about, we were getting out in an hour and ten minutes, and we're highly entertained. So I think you'll see them do that in the years to come, but we thank everyone for their support. I also want to say there's a lot of attention right now on our downtown clinic, the Fayetteville Medical Building. You know, that building's been around since nineteen oh nine. It's one of our longest-standing buildings that we own, and I'm sure there's a lot of people in the room who have been to the doctor's office there. I went to a pediatrician there as a young person. But we are moving, but we are not closing. Let me go on the record to say that. There's been a lot of attention, some positive, a little negative, because it's scary, right? It's very nostalgic. We've had a downtown presence for a very long time, but it, it's not a negative thing for us to move. We will be making that building a rural health clinic in the months that follow. So sometime next spring or next summer, we think about early spring, we'll be moving to what used to be the old Ralston McCauley Funeral Home, which where Dr. Morrison is located behind Carter's and Stone Bridge. And we felt we could successfully finish renovations in that building and move all of our providers and nurse practitioners and staff to that building and make a really nice clinic for the people who could use those providers. So that will be the plan, and our building, of course, is for sale. There's been a lot of talk around that building. I know the city's looked at it, the county's looked at it. I don't know where it's headed, but that's okay. I know if all things will work out the way they're supposed to. But we will be looking to move sometime in the spring or the summer, and we're getting excited about it. It's going to be beautiful. We will do a grand opening and a tour, and we'll invite you to come enjoy that with us at the time. Also want to say we successfully launched in July a nurse apprenticeship program. We were the fourth, one of four hospitals in the state, but the second in the state to actually launch. So we are launched right now with TCAT. We have three young ladies. We're working upstairs on our med search floor, so they're getting some one-on-one mentorship with nurses, and they're learning about nursing and learning, you know, that it's hopefully for them, and hopefully they will commit to work, to come back and work in our facility. And then hopefully in the spring, Montlo will join us in a partnership as well. So we'll have a partnership with TCAT and Montlo College, and we'll continue this booming program, this nurse apprenticeship program. In the middle of this, because the grant was so wonderful with the Department of Labor and Workforce Development, we've been able to help employees that exist in our workforce now, and we've been able to upskill them. So maybe you were a coder, but you weren't certified. Through these funds through the Department of Labor and Workforce Development, we've been able to certify people while doing on-the-job training. So it's been great for our employees and great for the people that are coming in through TCAT as well as our, in our own environment. I just want to let you know we continue to make things better at the Patrick. So our efforts have been a little slow this year, but we'll get back on that in two thousand and twenty-six. Patrick continues to be a loved place. Memberships are up. The schools continue to use us for swim lessons and, you know, basketball, all the things. So we, we have only hopes to continue making the Patrick better and great for the community. Donaldson as well. I don't know how long it's been since you maybe have taken a trip to Donaldson, but we've been doing a lot of work at Donaldson. And when I say a lot of work at Donaldson, I say, you know, we've done renovations. Maybe we haven't made it look like a brand-new place yet, but we've gone in as far back as we can and really done some, some strong deep work that needed to happen. Back down to the sheet rock, stripped the sheet rock, changed out some floors, really made things better for the people that live there and call it their home. So if you're at Donaldson, you'll, you'll notice that some really good work has gone on, and there's more to do and will be in the years that come. But I'm really happy about the work that's happening at Donaldson, and I'm really happy about our census at Donaldson, too. You know, the target is a hundred, and we stand at about ninety-five today. So that's, that's our mix with residents, so our, our long-term care mix, so people that live there, and then our skilled mix as well, so people that are there just recovering. So we, we stand around ninety-five, so that's a good number for us. Just a few last things. I want to let you know EMS, we've had a lot going on in our EMS world. We are getting ready to transition slash merge with Huntsville Hospital EMS. So MC was bought out a year or so ago by Huntsville Hospital, and we will be transitioning all under one umbrella, which will be great. They'll, our EMS here locally will have a reporting structure to me and to the president of EMS at Huntsville Hospital. So you won't notice a change here locally. We'll still be running calls, taking care of the community as normal, but they'll have an even stronger backbone and a stronger support system here locally. We are sourcing for a new director right now. We'll start interviews tomorrow and throughout the rest of the week. We've been staying in close contact with fire and police, keeping them updated of what's going on. So we do have an interim director right now, but our efforts continue to remain strong and make sure that we take care of the community. So we'll keep you updated when we do announce our new director, and we are excited for that. I do want to let you know our home health and hospice, things are well there. We had a beautiful ceremony last Friday night. It was called Celebration of Life, where we honored all families who have lost a loved one in the last year. And that may sound odd, but that is also important, too, because, you know, we offer services essentially from birth to death at the health system, and we've been taking care of people who have also struggled this year, too. So we took some time to remember them. We had a beautiful turnout, and we used our Patrick Center in the gym to essentially decorate it and turn it into something very beautiful. And we had a great turnout, and we were glad to celebrate those people. And then lastly, I'll tell you, as we, as we look ahead, people ask me all the time, where are we getting new, or what are we looking for, or how do we plan to grow the health system? And we're working hard to recruit. You know, there are lots of doctors who are planning to retire or slow down in the future. I know Ms. Melinda Williams would not mind me saying she is not one of our physicians, but does, you know, has had some staff privileges in the past, and she is retiring, of course, and that, that message has been out to the community. So we are picking up some of her patients and trying to help her out, but as physicians slow down and retire, we're making note of that, and we're in the background fighting really hard to try to find providers for you. You'll hear some news in the future about a new partnership with Huntsville Heart as we work really hard to get them into the community and get them here, some services from Huntsville Hospital that are important and that need to be here. So hopefully some news that I'll bring in the summer when I come back to talk to you about all the things that we're working on. But the main thing is we're here to serve you and this community, and we hope that we can do that and that you're hearing good things about what's going on at Fayetteville.
Thank you. Any questions?
I was just going to point on, so I know regionally, actually nationally, rural hospitals have really been hit pretty hard. It sounds like our, your partnership with Huntsville Hospital has really allowed you to stay at that top-tier level of care. Can you give like an overview on how well we're doing compared to other regional rural hospitals? And do we see that that's really affecting us, or is there something we can, or we as the community can help do to make sure that that's still a thing for us to have as an asset?
Sure. So, you know, that, that's almost a two-part answer. So if we still, it is still tough to be a small rural hospital here in Fayetteville, Tennessee. I'll make no bones about it. You know, today, transparently, there are only fourteen patients admitted at the hospital in Fayetteville. However, we'll probably see fifty people in our ER, which is great, and we may see half that many come through and have outpatient services performed, which is also great. Those are the things that sustain us. When you come and have your MRI locally, when you want to have your X-ray locally, when you come and use our ER. Will everybody come through and be admitted as an inpatient? Maybe not, because we don't have some of the services that people need to stay here long-term. We're working on those. Huntsville Hospital, they are a strong support arm for us, but they do expect us to stand on our own as well, to sustain our own capital, Joseph. That's what they're looking for us to do. So we're working really hard to do those things. We're looking really hard to make sure people know that we want them to come here to have outpatient services, that we want them to try us first for things that we can provide here. And I've always said we ought to be really good at the things that we can be really good at, and if we can't do them here, we should send you somewhere else. So it's important for people to know we know what those things are, we know what our capabilities are, but we won't, we won't always do them. You know, people ask me about things like urology and ENT. Do I think we'll ever employ those services full-time? I do not. I think they'll satellite here at some point. I think you'll be able to see a urologist here and then go on to Huntsville if you need something further. Do I think we'll ever do open heart surgery here? I do not. But I think at some point, five days a week, you'll be able to follow up with your cardiologist and have a really good experience here. So we're, we're working in conjunction with them to sustain ourselves, because that's very important. Now, are they there if we fall? Absolutely. But we want to show them that, that we can stand alone and together with them, and so that's what's been really great. And, you know, tomorrow, if my MRI breaks, I've got a phone number to call, and that'll be really good. But we're trying to, to do those things alone and beside them as well, too, in a joint partnership. So it is definitely a blessing. You think if you went home tonight and you had to drive further than thirty minutes to get to an ER, that's a scary thought. So we're glad that we're securing those services here locally for you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Beth. Next, we have Superintendent Eric Jones for the Fayetteville City School System.
Good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to come and present my report. It's always a pleasure to be able to come forward, board, mayor, and all. Really, I have a very great report. I want to take an opportunity to proclaim the good news about Ralph Askin School being a reward school. This is an outstanding designation. Obviously, all of you are aware that public schools have different state requirements and different federal requirements that they're expected to meet. These are accountability systems. So as you go through an accountability system, specifically the federal accountability system, there are a number of objective metrics that they use to determine whether or not, you know, the task is being accomplished, that students are being appropriately educated and things of that nature. And ballpark, there's about a hundred and forty ways not to do well on it, but there's only one way to do well on it. Ralph Askin did about as well as he can possibly do. So I'm very proud of the work being done there. I'm literally still a page from the Oak Valley Times, and I'll read kind of a snippet on what the reward schools are recognized when they demonstrate high levels of performance and/or improvement in performance by meeting objectives across performance indicators and student groups. The reward school designation places significant emphasis on performance and improvement across all indicators from the prior school year. So the reward school designation's a big deal. I'm really proud of it. I'm also proud that none of our schools are on any of the, the lists that would have basically a designation where they would anticipate improvement and provide support for improvements. Those are very easy to get on. Again, there's a number of ways that you can follow on those lists, and it's not uncommon to happen at all, but none of the Fayetteville City schools are on any of those lists, and I'm very proud of that. I think that's also highly commendable. So I want to report that to the board. We've got a lot of awesome things going on, including a fan concert a little later this evening. So if you know, you want to get in the holiday spirit, you can make your way over to the Fayetteville High School Gymnasium and listen to Christmas music. That is my report.
For any questions?
What's your, I think I saw maybe some staffing out for maybe a job breakout. How's your staffing? Does it seem like we, we need to like beat that up, or how's that?
No, no. Staffing's good. We do have a couple of jobs out, PA positions in particular. We always have, we keep a job out for foreign language. That's a really hard-to-bill position, and if we ever have the opportunity to hire a Spanish teacher in particular, we would seize upon that at any given time if we found somebody highly qualified and who felt like would be appropriate for the students. The others are, we've got a couple of personnel who will be taking maternity or paternity leave, so we're trying to get all our ducks in a row. So the next semester, when we come back, everybody's covered and accounted for, and we can make sure that we provide our services to students with ITs and things of that nature. So it's proactive planning for those types of situations. We're actually very fortunate. All of our full-time positions are covered. All of our busing staff is covered. I mean, I don't know as of today, but we're very likely, not only school system, there runs buses in the state that has a full complement of bus drivers. So we've been blessed, and we have good outcomes this year. So it's a really good situation. We're pleased.
And I know that, I believe it was last, maybe it was last year when the state passed the school choice bill, and I know that regionally that is impacting some attendance. How is your attendance going? Is it seem to be impacting you?
Attendance is good. As far as there's, there's a student census, so the number of students we have, ADA, ABM, we're actually probably up a little bit over last year, and daily attendance is holding solid. And last year, we had an improvement in that, which was part of the calculus on the reward school as well. So I doubt it's improved, but it's holding, which, holding from an improvement. I know all of you are familiar with numbers. Sometimes diminished returns comes into play to get that a couple of years up, but we're pleased. I would love, I wish that all the students were able to come all the time, but typically our attendance issues really arise just from a small percentage of students repeatedly not being able to come to school for various reasons. You agree with that?
What is your average daily attendance?
Off the top of my head, a thousand forty-eight, can you read? Something like that. I can, if you will send me an email on the morning, I'll send you the current.
Okay. Just wondering how it's held in. So, okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you all.
We have no unfinished business, so we'll move into our new business. Item eight on the agenda is the Fire Department toy drive the roadblock permit. Item A on the agenda is the Fire Department toy drive, the roadblock permit. That was held December the sixth, and we just need to approve that permit. Well, I jumped way ahead, way ahead. I'm sorry, department heads, we're going to do the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of November, the Fire Department responded to one hundred and fourteen calls of service. This included one fire, ninety-one EMS, one hazardous conditions, three service calls, eight good and tense, and ten possible murders.
Thank you, sir. And now for the Police Department, Chief Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Total incidents was one hundred and thirteen. There were sixty-four arrests made. There were twenty traffic crashes. Total of one hundred and thirty-nine total citations issued. One thousand six hundred and fifty-four police activity events. And our Criminal Investigations Division, we have a total of four hundred and seventy-four total cases. Nine of those are new cases opened with close six cases. The CID made two arrests, and there was three grand jury presentations. We also have a given animal control update. Currently, there are thirty-seven animals in the shelter. Seven have been adopted. There was, the call response, six calls within the city, and there were twenty-three in the county. Animals recovered out of those were six in the city and thirty-three out in the county. We had twenty-three animals transferred out of shelter. That's my report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Moving to the Finance Department, Director Warner.
Yes. Local option sales tax received in November was three hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred eighteen. This is an increase of eleven point two percent. State share sales tax was seventy-six thousand six hundred and sixty-eight. This is an increase of six point two percent over last year. Occupancy tax was fourteen thousand nineteen dollars. However, this was a twenty point three percent decrease over this month last year. That's my report.
Thank you. Now to Parks and Recreation Department, Director Browning.
Thank you, Mayor. As fast as we can, it was a success, some bright lights, festive nights, as well as our annual Christmas parade. I just want to thank all of our ninety-three participants. The Street Department, police, fire, Jonathan with IT, and especially our Parks and Recreation staff for bringing this past weekend together. Also, I want to thank Ms. Lucy Carter, Carolyn Dinn, and Brett Dye for making it available for those who could not make it out until the break. And Merry Christmas, and that's my report.
Thank you. Okay, I think tonight Kevin Owens will be reporting for the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board and Mayor. Mr. Williams is out sick today, so he asked me to give this report. He wanted me to remind the public that those pickups, those garbage pickup on Christmas Day and New Year's Day, they would be done on Friday, February twenty-sixth, and January second, which will be those routes that would have done normally on those Thursdays. And we're doing what we need to to publicize on websites, as well as other media outlets. And also, he wants me to report that in the month of November, the Public Works Department did pick up three hundred and three tons of brush and leaves, and they did two hundred and sixteen tons of trash. And they also had twenty-six orders completed in the garage. And that's Public Works' report.
Thank you. We have Planning Coach, Director Gentry.
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of November, we issued eleven building permits. The total project valuation was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The total permit fees were two thousand and ninety-one dollars. Fourteen property maintenance violations were issued in November. We are in the process of doing some follow-up interviews, which will take place at the beginning of next week. Our goal is to offer the property maintenance in special position before the Christmas holidays, although they probably won't be certified to begin March until the quarterly gift jeceling. At the November twenty-fifth Planning Commission meeting, two minor flats were approved, and the site construction plan for a mixed-use development was approved. There will not be a December Planning Commission meeting, and the regular monthly meetings will resume on January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-six. That's my report.
Thank you. And back to you, Mr. Owens, of the Senate Administrator's Report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, Board, hopefully you have received my previous month's report, but also just to let everybody know that the Building Committee, which is made up of Jack and Jill and Debbie, we're working to have a roof assessment and cleaning on this Saturday, December thirteenth. That's been something that we've been planning on for a while. So we will notify everybody around about that cleaning. We are also working on strategic planning plans that is scheduled for January thirty-first. We have an important Fleet Management meeting on Thursday, December eleventh. And our Finance Director has announced that she is retiring in January. So we are full swing recruiting for our next Finance Director. And that concludes my report on that. If there's any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Now we'll move on. There is no unfinished business, and we'll move to our new business. Item A, this is the Fire Department toy drive roadblock permit. This was held on December the sixth, twenty-twenty-five. So we need a motion on this request.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Keenan, second.
Second.
Alderman Alder, any discussion? Debbie, call the vote.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Ms. Small?
Aye.
That motion carries. Also, we have a permit for open night permit. It was November the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. We just need a motion to approve this for the record.
So move.
Motion by Alderman Allen, second. Alderman Keenan, any discussion on this permit? Debbie, call the vote.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Ms. Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item C, this is for ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash three-two. This is for the City of Fayetteville, FY twenty-six, Budget Amendment Number Seven. And you will see on there, there are eight sections. Each section is identified in this ordinance. The section one, it's the police expenditure for an increase of three hundred and ninety dollars. Section two is a revenue expenditure adjustment. This were donations that were increased in the Parks and Recreation Department. Also, an expenditure adjustment. This is a transfer to animal control expenditure to fifteen thousand dollars. Section four is a revenue and expenditure adjustment. The animal control revenue is hereby increased by thirty-one thousand eight thirty. This is to be appropriated to the following general ledger account as stated. Also, section five, that's an expenditure adjustment. The sanitation fund expenditure is hereby increased by eleven thousand nine hundred dollars. Section six is an expenditure adjustment. This is the administration expenditure budget is hereby increased by thirty-six hundred dollars. And item seven, section seven, is expenditure adjustment. The streets expenditure budget is hereby increased by thirty-six hundred dollars. And section eight is, that is just a total of the, no, that's not. Therefore, be it resolved by the governing body, that it therefore hereby adopts the following changes to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Alder, second. Second by Alderman Bradford, any discussion? Debbie, call the vote.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Ms. Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
That motion carries. Moving to item D, this is ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-four. This is the City of Fayetteville records retention policy. This, the staff has worked very, very hard to come up with a record retention policy. This will be on all records within the city. They are following the state, what is recommended by the Secretary of State. This has been presented through the work session and onto the board here to approve. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Bradford, second by Alderman Keenan. Is there any questions about this ordinance? Debbie, call.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Ms. Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item E, this is for ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash three-four to amend the permit fee policy. And this came to us from the Police Department. This is chapter eight of the municipal code. That, what this is in response to is event permits. All permits will go to the Police Department, and they will be approved from there and then presented to the board. You have been presented with the former policy and also an updated, what that we wish to pass and make this part of our municipal code. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Bradford, second.
Second.
Alderman Keenan, any discussion? Here, now Debbie, call the vote.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Ms. Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
That motion carries. That is all of our business for tonight. And before I adjourn the meeting, I do want to remind everybody, as our City Administrator spoke, is garbage pickup for Christmas Day will be picked up the day after if your garbage is on Thursday. The same thing for New Year's Day, it will be the following date. Those dates are December the twenty-sixth and January the second. This meeting is adjourned.